Thank you, everyone. I know it takes a long time to set up for that. Yes, thank you. And when's your next concert?
March 20th, a big district concert.
So not very far away, is it? Wow, thank you. One of the things that we love about Mrs. Allman's teaching is how she integrates science and math and all geography into her music. And you can see that on the sheet that's in front of you. So, thank you again. Thank you, everybody. Okay, good.
If I could call the meeting to order, please? If we could stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you would take a few moments to make sure your cellphones are silenced, please?
So we have a presentation of the Capital Project update. General Technology, Mr. Martin and Mrs. Karstedt.
Okay. I thought I would start tonight by explaining that the technology projects, we've actually got three sort of going on at the same time. So we've got the Bosse's E-Rate project that started last year, which is the new Wi-Fi, the Capital Project, which is the new wiring, new data switch, is new central server room, and the Smart Schools investment bond, which is will be the new, which will be the new digital security system, and VoIP phone system. The three projects work together. Some of the pieces are overlapping, which is why I keep getting some questions, and I thought this might be a good time to kind of sort it all out for you. And all the parts of these have to go consecutively. I'm gonna try to explain the three projects in the next three slides here. Okay. Do you remember last year, we had the Bosse's E-Rate project, it was $300,000 project. It started last year. The funding actually came through last year. And Bosse's came in, this is with a conjunction with Bosse's, and they replaced our Wi-Fi controller system. They put a new switch in every closet in all three buildings. And where we have those drops like that, our old drops down the centers of the hall, because that's the way we used to do things, they put new drops on there. And it really shored up our system. It was pretty wobbly before that. And it was pretty much the impetus of being able to move forward with our one-to-one project at the GLP with Mrs. Carter. Because before that, they could not have had 25 to 30 iPads running at the same time in every classroom. The part that we had to stop was, though, is that we need more wiring. And that's where the Capital Project comes in. The Capital Project is gonna be replacing all the wiring in all the classrooms, which they've already started at the elementary building, and installing new wire. Plus, they're installing in the center of every room, two drops that's gonna be able to put an access point in every classroom and in every office. So, once they're done, we're gonna be able to go on and finish the E-Rate project. So it's kind of like in limbo right now. The Capital Project. This project is replacing, which I just said, all the existing data cables and wiring district-wide. In addition, it's adding that Wi-Fi points I just talked about, which also they're adding the points for the new security system, which will come after the Capital Project. It's replacing the phone lines that we already have, so that when we get our new phone system, we can just connect it in there. It's also building new data closets. We have 14, but shrinking it down, we're losing three. I think District Y, they're being able to consolidate. They're moving the new main server room to the room next door, to where it is currently located, mostly because we need more room, because we're going to be bringing that new digital security system in-house. So that brings up the digital security system and the new VoIP system. They are part of the Smart Schools Bond Investment Plan. This is our second submission. I think I talked to you earlier in the fall about it. It's been since October in the review room. The commission that reviews these plans, our proposals, they're supposed to meet every quarter, like in October, January, April, and July. They met in October, but they had such a bad fog that we weren't even in the running to get looked at in October. They did not meet in January. This is not a surprise. They've had this happen before, where they don't meet on the scheduled time. I'm hoping they meet in July, or April, or July again, which we got our approval last year for our first submission in July last year, remember? So that's how we got all those devices. So, again, we're waiting for SED approval, but as I was just explaining to Mrs. Anzalone this week, it's kind of a moot point, because these two projects must happen after everything that the current Capital Project is complete. So, giving us a little time, because we have to finish everything else first. So, some other tech areas that are in the Capital Project. The new security system up for the field, we discussed this, I know, in October. They're about halfway done installing that. They've got the cameras up on the concession stand. We've got the new switch in there. We are still waiting for environmental controlled switch box to go up in the press box, because that's not heated, so we can put the other switch up there, then get the cameras up there, put the new server in. It's going to actually live in the concession stand back in the room where we have the controller. So we're about halfway done with that project. The new lighting and sound systems for the Elementary Odd, as you know, the scaffolding's down there, and now they're getting in there on the brown floor, doing some of that work. I actually signed off on the new lighting system last Friday. The sound system, the wiring's in, the speakers are in, but all of the stuff that makes it a sound system is not in yet. So I'm hoping that's in in the next few weeks. In addition, some of the things I've been working on are some of the new equipment that needs to go into some of these areas. New flat screens for a brand-new big conference room, if you've seen that. New televisions, we just ordered this week for the new Ape Center, and then new smartboards for the new kindergarten rooms. So, what's the timeline look like? We're in the February/March right now. Capital Project is finishing up the wiring closets and everything they didn't quite get done, including the district office at the elementary school. We just had a meeting about two weeks ago to go over this timeline, and with Bosse's and the Capital Project people, kind of all in one big room. They're hoping by April 1st to be able to turn it over to Bosse's, if you go to the bottom level. Then Bosse's can go in there, finish off the elementary school, put all the new switches in, put those access points in every classroom, yay, elementary school. So they're gonna have improved Wi-Fi. By June, we're hoping to be able to have the new main server room built. And that means, right now, they've just kind of gunned it through. They're starting to put the air conditioning in there. It needs anti-static floor. They're gonna rip out the ceiling, because they need to put so many wires in there. They, you know, new data racks in there, new secure entranceway, and then all the electronics that needs to go in there. So that in July, Bosse's can come in and move our existing servers and switchgear and fiber over to the new server room. July/August will be when they are tackling the Capital Project, the GLP, and the high school. The GLP's a little better shape, because, this is gonna sound funny, because for years you all complained about this, they weren't in the 2000 Capital Project. So basically, they can run the new wires and not disturb the old wires, because it was never in the system. Here at the high school, it's a whole different ballgame. This is the building, I have to tell you, I'm a little, my palms sweat a little bit about. They have to do everything they did at the elementary school last summer in a bigger building. They have to rewire this complete building and get it done at least a full week before school starts, so that Bosse's can get in here and connect those new wires, so that we have phone systems and computers and all those things. So, we've only gotten this far, and we're hoping that we stay on track. But, that's kind of where we're at with the two projects. Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay. So I'm gonna talk about more of the mechanical side, and where we're at with a lot of the existing projects. There we go. Okay. So let's start with what we call the Ape Space, which is gonna be the new fitness center. This is currently where we're at. These pictures were taken today. You'll notice that it's moving along. We have a floor, and a laminated floor, which looks like wood, and a rubber floor. And I have some other pictures. That's not a floor, that's obviously one of the new bathrooms. We have some lockers now. And again, there's that floor. That is the, what used to be the district office, where the superintendent and her secretary sat, and in the corner was where the business office was. This will be the check-in counter and the entryway coming into what will be the new fitness center. And that board, what looks like a wood wall on the right-hand side, that'll be for displays and hanging things and articles and whatever they may have for sale. That is what used to be the two classrooms that, I believe, Special Ed was in one, Mrs. Clock was in one, I believe, correct? And I believe Dan Carriero and Tim Wade were in the other one. So, that will all be filled with fitness equipment as well. This side is, I believe, most of the weight equipment, and the front side is most of the machines. This is one of the new bathrooms. If you remember the bathrooms in the entryway, the sports entryway, both those bathrooms are being renovated. This is the women's bathroom. The front part of that bathroom that used to be empty will, is now being renovated into a family bathroom, something that we never had. So, there will be a family bathroom coming off of that front hallway as well. Over at the GLP, this is, well, basically, one of the new kindergarten rooms. We don't have a ceiling in there, but we do have walls that are put up, some painting that's been done. Again, the floor hasn't been put in yet, but the space is very large. It'll be nice for the new kindergarten, they will, they have individual bathrooms. There will be a little storage room as well, and a little common area with drinking fountains for the students. You'll notice that the colors are kind of bold, the primary colors. We're carrying that on a little bit up in the new middle school here. We've met with the teachers and talked to them about carrying those colors through, so we're kind of excited about that. My staff will be doing some painting, hopefully, over the summer. So there's, there's workers still putting in some of the, some of the services. It's pretty, pretty expensive, the amount of work that's going into putting these classrooms together.
David, can you just talk a little bit about why we took walls down?
Okay. So, if you remember, at GLP, rooms five, six, and seven were on the left-hand side, 14, 15, 16, or on the right-hand side, 14, 15, 16 were on the left-hand side. So what we did is, we pulled walls down out of those rooms to create four large kindergarten rooms. So essentially, six classrooms now became four. And those four are now going to be kindergarten rooms.
So they're about 1,200?
Yeah, they're about 1,200 square feet. Laura, I don't know if you've seen this yet, but this is the start of your main office. This is room one, and if you kind of look on the floor, you can see the metal track for where the stuttered walls are going to go. The workers are currently putting in the plumbing for the little snack room that they have, you know, a little kitchenette that they're gonna put in. You can't really get a full sense from the picture, but the layout is gonna be pretty nice. Over at the elementary school, this is the new district office entrance. Now the doors are in, we don't have the wooden door and all that anymore. We now have regular doors that have been installed, along with the new handicap ramp and railing and steps. From the inside, this will be the reception area. The double doors will come into a secure locked area. There will be a secretary sitting at that large opening, which will be a glass security window, to screen the people that are coming into the district office, to visit either somebody in the business office, or the district office, or my office. And this will be how everybody will be entering, get into those areas. The parking lot has been set up outside, so there are some reserved spots already for visitors, so you won't be walking a long distance to come visit somebody in the district This is the little break room. The back room you see there, that will be a bathroom. Within the break room, we're gonna have counters, there'll be a refrigerator and a microwave, so that the employees can keep their lunches and things cold and heat up things when they need to. This is the conference room. It's, it's something that we've lacked in this district for a very long time. It's a large conference room, so we can do multiple things. You heard Lucinda talk about some interactive TVs. One of those interactive TVs will be in this room. We're looking at furnishing that won't necessarily be a huge conference table. There'll be tables that'll serve multiple purposes. So if you need to accommodate 20 or 30 people, we can do that. Or if you need to accommodate 10 people, we can do that as well. So we're looking at some multipurpose furniture to go into this room. This is the two offices. The one on the right is for the business manager. The room on the left will be a conference room for her to use. Small areas, they're probably close to 12 by 12 each. This will be the treasurer's office. Mary Laosco will be in there. If you look at the far end, you can see a pair of double doors. That'll be, that comes off of the hallway, and that'll be the entry to either get to the business office or get to the district offices. That is, on the left, Sandy's office, and to the right, that is her conference room. And where those stacks of boxes are, that is where her secretaries will be located, and all of what they need to keep the district offices functional. This is a common area between district office and the business office, which will be a workroom. So some of the machinery that we use on a daily basis will be located here, including postage machine and some of the copiers and that kind of stuff. So that'll be a common area that'll be accessible to everybody that needs to do some things without disturbing the secretaries and asking them to have to do this, do a project. This is the area where my new digs will be. That, when we looked at the front entrance, there was a separate door on the right-hand side. That leads into my room, will be my office. And the reason I kept that is so that my guys, when they come in with muddy feet, will be coming into my office, and not making the rest of the office dirty. Outside, you probably have noticed these boxes sitting out there. Inside of one is the new generator that is going to back up the entire elementary school, and also the bus garage, because the bus garage gets power from the elementary school. The other one is what we're planning for this coming break, is the shutdown to allow us to connect to national grid and get off the Cogen plant. So that box is where all of that will take place, the switches that will feed power into the building, and the connection to the Cogen will then be severed. So, those needed to be in place before any of this could occur. Down in the basement of the elementary, this is the high-voltage switch, so they're making a lot of electrical connections to accommodate that switch over. You'll notice, I don't know how many of you remember being on the tour with me, but the boiler room of the elementary school has gotten a lot busier down there, with a lot of electrical equipment. The old generator is gone, which, by the way, is on Auctions International, bid once, bid high. So there's a lot of things up there, right now, that we are disposing of. If you're interested in generators, there's three of them on there. There's a couple pianos and a few other things. So, take a look at Auctions International, it's, it has a lot of equipment from schools and nonprofits that they put up there. But getting back to this, as I said, you'll notice, because a lot of people don't see infrastructure, that a lot of what goes on with renovation occurs in boiler rooms and a lot of out-of-the-way places. In the elementary lobby, in addition to having the handicap wheelchair lift, we now have a door that leads directly into the main office and a transaction window. The wood doors that lead directly into the hall will eventually become secure doors, so that when you do come to the elementary school, you will transact your business through that window. If you need to get into the building for some reason, you will go through that door, and you'll be screened, and then you'll leave the main office and head into the building. That type of system will occur at all three schools eventually. It's unfortunate that it is what it is, because it's hard to take a good picture of the auditorium, but the auditorium is looking much, much better. For the longest time, we had scaffolding set up. We now have LED lighting that has gone in. This platform that you see in the back, some rows of seats were taken out. There will be a platform that, that's put there with light, a lighting control panel and sound control panel. So this, this auditorium will now be set up to handle performances just like the high school is. So, we needed an area in the back of the auditorium to have the people that Lucinda uses to operate all of the systems that'll be involved in running a performance. You'll also notice that the curtains have been taken down. Those have all been removed, and they're being, they've been laundered, they're waiting, going back up. We still have a little more work to do on the stage, because we wanna basically make a performance stage out of it, get rid of the white out of there, turn it black, and refinish the stage itself.
It's air-conditioned, too.
Yeah, and it is air-conditioned. And I know it's hard to tell, but up at the ceiling is where the air-conditioned ducts are, and they run their lateral duct. And we're kind of excited about that, because the auditorium for the elementary school is really underutilized. And for those of you that have been there for graduations and other performances, you know how warm it gets in that auditorium. So now we'll be able to run our different programs at a comfortable level for the audience as well as the performers. Okay, and we're back to the beginning. Now, I wanna show you something else that I really can't publish yet, but I'll give you a look at it. One of the things that, this is gonna take a little time to put together, that we did was, we bought some time-lapse cameras, so that we could see not only what was happening in the building of the Turf Stadium, but to be able to do this and eventually put this up on our website for everyone to see. So, this has not been out. Nobody has seen it, other than myself and the people from campus, and a couple of administrators. So this'll give you an idea of what it took to put that field together. One thing that you will notice is that we got a lot of rain. The other thing you'll notice is there's a heck of a lot of stone that went into this field.
David, do you have the one where the water catch basins are?
I do.
That would be a great way to show as well.
Okay. So what's, what's going on there is that they're actually removing the old rubber and asphalt track. And eventually, what you're gonna see is, is the excavator's gonna come along again, and he's gonna excavate a lot of the dirt that was under that track. And then eventually, you'll see some drainage going in and peripheral drain around the actual field itself.
You haven't seen the sunshine yet.
Exactly.
Dave, maybe you and Lucinda can answer this. But is there any way we can use this camera moving forward? Maybe have it live on the website or something on those lines?
It's, it's not designed really to, to be a live camera, in that it stores all the images in, on an SD card in whatever you program it, whatever that increment will be. Then what has to happen is all of those segments, and this is days and days and days, all have to be stitched together to form this thing.
Okay.
I can tell you that the camera, each, each day, it, it pretty much ran about eight megabyte. It uses a lot...
That's the pad going down, right?
Yep, that's the pad going down. It's, it's kind of interesting, because it almost looks like, okay, we're gonna take the pad up, and miraculously, we have grass underneath. That's not really what happened. Now they're laying the, the actual grass on top of it. And before long, you're gonna see some towers go up. Some numbers, some letters, some towers. Some goalposts.
Now the sun's out.
Now the sun is out. And boom, there's your field.
Beautiful.
Good job.
Nice job.
Are you gonna show what happens to just your two trees? So we thought that we would be able to put the catch basins for the water in the field without really disturbing too much of the trees that lead up to the baseball field. I mean, that's where you and I sat for one of the games. And we found that there was just no way that was gonna happen.
So, what you saw with the construction of the field is an awful lot of stone that went under, you know, the pad and underneath the turf. What happens with our, our artificial fields is that they're designed so the water doesn't sit on them, unlike a grass field. So that water has to go someplace. So what we ended up doing is putting in what's called a retention chamber. And what you're seeing here is what will eventually be the retention chamber being built and covered back up. So, all that drainage that was laid out onto the field now empties water into this entire thing.
And how much water can it hold in?
30,000 gallons. If you look on the field itself, those, those, you know, the kind of grayish-black things, that's actually the retention chamber. You'll see, they're like little Quonset huts. And they'll put them in that hole eventually here, you'll see that. I think it's kind of cool, because it almost looks like, when you watch this video, they're working, 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 and then all of a sudden, things stop, and then there's a baseball game going on. There it is! There it is! So the question is, why do you put this in? As I said, what happens is, the field is designed not to retain water. If you were to take the water that's coming off of that field and just allow it to go where it used to go, what would happen is we would end up flooding the fields that are basically down there by the corner of Shattigee and Route 62? Because eventually that's where all this water ends up. So the purpose of this thing is to hold that water back, and we're actually discharging less water than we did with the old grass field, which is really pretty interesting. So I know the concern from a lot of the farmers that are out there was that, oh my God, now the school's building this field, we're going to get flooded out. The reality is that that is far from the case. We're holding more water than we're releasing or ever released off of our field. So there's the start of little quantum hut things, that's the retention chamber. And they cover it with Geotech style again. And what's interesting is really a physics thing for those physics students that might be here. Your teacher probably told you that one of the strongest shapes that is out there is either a circle or a round shape or an egg shape. That guy's driving a bulldozer on top of those quantum huts that are made out of polypropylene plastic. So there's a little physics lesson for you. And there's the retention chamber. So the other one that's on here, and I don't know if you really want to see it, because it's kind of, it's a little longer, but is the refreshment stand. And unfortunately, I don't have the finish of the refreshment stand, because somebody stole one of the cameras, which is unfortunate, but if you want to see it, I'll show it to you.
Why don't you show part of it, David?
Let me see if I can get up to...
So have you noticed a difference already on the baseball field, in terms of drainage and water sitting?
Um...
Or the tennis courts?
The tennis courts, I can't really say yes or no yet, because my focus really was the field itself. So I'll know more in the spring, that'll really tell the tale after the snow melt. But I anticipate that, you know, we're going to see a lot less water standing around than what we used to have.
So while you have this view, can you just talk about what's coming this summer down from the school you wrote?
Okay, so the contractors will be back in the spring, and in the front of the high school, that little horseshoe bus drop-off, we're going to see them start excavating that to install the new visitor parking lot and the walkways and everything for the new front entrance to the high school. So when the building was originally built, the biggest problem was that the, what we call the bookstore entrance out here, was really supposed to be the front entrance, but nobody ever knew it, because it never really looked like the front entrance. It just looked like a little corner entrance to the building. So people would come into the auditorium and they'd just kind of look around and say, okay, now where do I go? So the purpose of doing this project is to create and designate the true front entrance to the high school and create that secure entrance, and do it in a way where we didn't impede traffic to the student parking lot or for bus entrance or exit, because everything will come off of the same driveway that the students use to get to the tennis court parking lot.
And David, what's happening with the ditch coming down from Jenny's?
Eventually, what will happen is the same contractor will be out there, he'll be installing what's called riprap, which is a larger stone. They'll be lining that ditch to try and hold more water back from getting down in front of the high school, which will help with the drainage. So hopefully we won't have the flooding that we've had occasionally occur out the front entryway here. So, you know, that work will all happen this summer. All right, any questions on capital project, where we are? Leave it off, just for a second.
Oh, leave it off for a minute?
Yep. Because now I want to move into the next phase, which is the capital outlay. We're required to have this meeting, we talked about the capital outlay project. Do you remember? Past couple of years, we've been doing, wow, okay, we've been doing some hundred thousand dollar projects, and we want to continue that process. We've done some doors, and where we want to head this year is, well, let me go through the process. What is it? Simply put, if you were to give me a dollar bill and say, I want you to do some work, I would do the work, spend that dollar bill, you would apply to the state for aid on the work that I did, the state would reimburse you next year for that dollar's worth of work. So you would get whatever our building aid ratio is back from the state the following year, and we would then have to make up the difference to do another hundred thousand dollar project. In a nutshell, that's how it works. All right? The state has allowed us to do that. So borrowing from our architect, it's to keep our buildings warm, safe and dry, and we're trying to cover things that the twenty-two million dollar capital project wasn't large enough to cover. And one of those projects is the front entry coming into the auditorium. Most of you have come to performances, you know how bad that sidewalk is. So what we want to do is, we want to pull all of it out, we want to replace it, and if there's additional money left, we'll start replacing some of the concrete that heads over toward the area behind the library, which is off to the right. So that alternate bid would be some of those concrete pads at the auditorium doors. One of the requirements of the project is that we have to do a minimum of ten percent of the work within the building. So we're going to look at replacing some ceilings. Where that'll happen yet, I don't know. I'm working with Young and Wright to determine which of the ceilings are the worst. We have to do all of the work within one building, so that'll be the high school, because the majority of the work is going to be spent with concrete work. So we will do some interior work. What we are trying to do is basically take and lay out two capital projects, two capital outlay projects this year. One to do in the eighteen-nineteen year and one to do in the nineteen-twenty, so they run in conjunction and work with each other. So chances are, the next one you'll see will be the ceiling in the auditorium lobby. So that'll happen in the twenty, twenty-one, or nineteen-twenty school year. All right? So any questions about the capital outlay project, where we're heading, what we're doing and how it works? Okay, now I can have some lights, please. The last thing I want to talk to you about, because I know you've got a long night ahead of you, I have to do my budget. So I believe, Laura, everybody has the budget information, correct?
Nope, I can get that.
Okay.
They have a huge summary for when we're all done. Is what they have in your handout, so they're going to have to listen to what you...
Speak into your mic, guys.
What we have is a summary of where we are grand total wise. We don't have the line-by-line detail. David's going to talk about his line-by-line detail, and we're going to show you how it rolls up into the budget as a whole. It's a little newer concept for you this year.
Okay, so we were, as administrators, we were all charged with trying to create a zero-based budget. So for the most part, my budget will be zero-based. There are some exceptions to that. Increases that are in my budget, diesel fuel for the Cogen plant. We, I don't know exactly how much money we spent this year, but I think it was somewhere around twenty-three thousand dollars, because one of the engines needed a complete overhaul. So that was out of service for an extended period of time, and we only budgeted, I believe, seven thousand dollars is out of this year's budget. So we went way over the amount that we originally had budgeted. So we have returned the budget amount to what it was two years ago, fifteen thousand dollars. So that is an increase in one line item. We're hoping that we do not have another engine failure, but we have to be prepared for it, because we certainly can't continue to absorb these kind of costs. The other area where my budget increased is in the upkeep and buildings and grounds. And the reason that we had that increase is basically, we need to make sure we have some funds available to do some renovation for the middle school coming to the current high school. We've had a number of meetings with teachers, and we've talked about painting and building a wall where one of the movable walls was. So I needed to make sure I had funds available, because when you put a wall up, obviously the next thing that happens is, well, we've got to have some outlets, and so we had to make sure that we had that covered. Painting, like I said, is included in there, so I'm going to need some supplies for that. The other thing that we put some money into budget is to buy some LED lighting upgrades for here at the high school. As you know, we've done some parking lot lighting, we have not touched the building surface lights. So this building, because we can't, once we divorce GLP and elementary from Cogen, we can go to NYSARDA and get some rebates. We can't get those here. So we're budgeting some money, so we can put some LED lights on the high school and do some upgrades here. And that's the reason that there is ten thousand dollars put in for some lighting here at the high school. All right? I'm sure you'll agree that the LED lighting has made a tremendous difference in the appearance and the security around the high school. We've got some tweaking to do, because I know some of the neighbors are not real happy with the amount of light that they're putting out. So we're adjusting fixtures and making sure that they're a little happier, and we still aren't degrading the quality of the light that we're getting here. The other thing that is in my budget is something new, not covered in the capital construction project, and there's fifty thousand dollars to try and basically keep our parking lots functional. Right now, the winter has already taken a pretty severe toll on our parking lots, so we know that we've got to do something to try and preserve what we have. So we have budgeted fifty thousand dollars in our separate line items solely for the upkeep of parking lots. So that's in the budget. Other than that, the total increase in my basic budget exclusive of the parking lots is thirty-nine thousand, three hundred ninety-three dollars and fifty cents. And that basically accounts for the things that I described, and a little extra in supply money, because I know the cost of supplies has gone up. So, any questions?
You know, I don't have a question, David, but I'd really like you to talk about how fortuitous it was that we got our capital project in when we did, because I am hearing from some of my colleagues, the disaster that's happening right now with trying to get capital projects approved in other districts.
Right. So what's happened with facilities planning in Albany is that the Commissioner of Education has really pushed Carl Farnow's replacement to try and improve the period of time that it's taken to approve projects. And essentially, what's happened is that it is not improved. So what's happening now is, if we were to submit a budget or a project for approval, it would end up going to a BOCES, and BOCES would, they employ some architects to look over the project, make sure that our submission is completely correct...
And complete.
And complete.
For a fee.
Yep, for a fee. And then they would forward it on to facilities planning, and facilities planning would stamp it and send it back to us. They're hoping that that process will speed things up. So far, we have not seen that happen.
So ours was approved in about thirty-two weeks.
Right.
Which we thought, that's about what we thought.
Right.
I'm hearing from some of my colleagues that they're well over forty, forty-five...
Forty, forty-five.
And losing this coming summer already.
Yep.
Which is massive, when you start to think about the cost.
Yep. And the one thing I know, my state association has tried to do for them is to get the legislators to put some money together, because we're talking about technology, the archaic system that they were using was unbelievable for tracking projects. So not only are they trying to move forward with projects, they're trying to learn a new software package. And the other problem they're having is that the private sector is sucking up their architects because they can't be competitive with the wages that they're offering those employees. It's unfortunate, it really is. And what that means is, we all suffer. So we are very fortunate.
Yes, we are. Thank you for explaining that.
These capital outlay projects, they always fast-track those, because they're small, they're easy, they usually involve one, maybe two trades, and most of the time they're architectural and not mechanical.
David, is there any movement on that, go to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand instead of a hundred thousand?
There's a bill that's out there currently, and I'm not sure if it's standalone or it's being tagged on to something else, but it is going to come up for a vote, I believe, this year. And if they increase it to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, it would be a very good thing, because a hundred thousand dollars, by the time you get done with architects and engineering fees and those kind of things, you're probably down to about a seventy-five thousand dollar project. So if you can do two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, you can make a bigger dent in what you're trying to accomplish.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on anything that was presented? I know I've taken a considerable amount of time.
Thank you.
If not, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
I'd just like to add, the benefit of these one-year capital outlay, instead of being reimbursed as a district over fifteen years, we're reimbursed the next year. So our state ed comes in the following school year.
Good to know.
So are we continuing with budget presentations, or, so we have budget presentations for junior, senior high? Eden Elementary, GLP, curriculum and revenue?
I'm Mr., so I'm going to just quickly go over the highlights for the curriculum, instruction and professional development budget for next year. Our main initiatives are around materials and training for all the new initiatives that state ed is rolling out. We are still working on the implementation of the New York State Social Security Framework. The Next Generation Science Standards were just recently approved, so we are waiting for publishers and vendors who have materials available around that. Most importantly, state ed has changed how core learning standards to the Next Generation ELA and math standards, so we will... So, we will be having training around implementation of those standards and then checking our curriculum maps. And we don't need major changes in our materials and that, we just have to make sure our instruction is meeting those standards. And we will also continue our training around personalized learning. Our major sources for professional development are through BOCES. So, we have many teachers go to the eight to 10 forums that they hold three to four times a year in communities of practice. Our teachers attend specific content area trainings at BOCES and we bring BOCES trainers in on professional development days. So, all of that training is aligned to those initiatives from State Aid. We're specifically going to continue in the K through five, the implementation of ERLA. So, we need materials around those personalized learning, reading materials, and something big coming to the junior, senior high is materials and training for implementation of coding classes. So, that's what's going on in curriculum and instruction.
Great, thanks both. My first. Hi, good evening, Board of Ed. How is everybody?
Good.
Good, how are you?
If you take a look at the, I labeled it even middle school, even high school, but it's the junior, senior high currently. Obviously, a focus on the top three board goals that I put there for instruction, we're working hard on middle school transition as the sixth grade comes up next September, next year. The technology goal, we continue to work on implementing personalized learning. And for the PR goal, we're real proud of this one. In our participation government class, part of the requirements to complete that course is that students complete 20 hours of community service. And I know that's been a big goal of this board. And a lot of that credit goes to Mrs. Hamlet who made that part of her syllabus. So, it's all been going really well. I actually checked in with Mrs. Hamlet today. She has a big list of opportunities for kids to get community service. They've been signing up. She's tracking it and it's been real successful. So, we're proud of that at the junior, senior high. As far as the budget goes, we've pretty much told the line from last year, kept most budget lines the same. We have a couple increases. One that came up, and it came up kind of recent, was as we started thinking about the middle school, we started thinking about changing agendas, the books that the kids carry. So, we'd like to change that format, make it larger, a little nicer, for more middle school-ish. So, we're working with the vendor. I added $1,000 in that line. I don't think it will be that much, but I thought I would put that just to be safe. We're still kind of working and feeling out what that book will look like.
Jeff, can I ask a question? Do you see the middle school agenda looking different than the high school agenda?
I do.
So, you see two different ones?
Yep.
Okay.
And I think initially, we thought we would slap six through 12 on one book and go with it. And I think as we keep thinking and kind of chugging on this concept of middle school, we're seeing these little things that are coming up and getting input. So, we see a bigger book, maybe a little more basic, user-friendly for the age group. Same vendor that we use for the junior, senior high, seven through 12. So, we're just, we're waiting to set up some meetings and get some prices. Another one that kind of popped out of the blue is this flax, membership flax is the Foreign Language Association of Chairpersons and Supervisors. And what they provide is really the equivalent of a Regents exam for foreign language. They're an accredited company that produces our Checkpoint A, which kids take in eighth grade, and Checkpoint B, which they take in 10th grade. So, we have to be part of that. We order those exams, we administer them during Regents exams. The state even puts them on the exam schedule. My guess is the state must love that a third-party vendor creates these exams and we pay a membership and order exams through them. Other than that, that's pretty much the highlights from the junior, senior high budget.
More highlight that Jeff and I have talked about late in the day today. In researching and looking at everything for the sixth grade movement, we're going to have a small pot of money set aside to be able to utilize for the things that we weren't aware of with the movement of the sixth graders from the Eden Elementary up to the middle school. That way, if something was negated in the budget process, there's a little bit of room for Jeff to manage the emergency needs that we didn't think about at this time because it's such a new concept to Eden.
Any questions?
I'm just gonna talk about Eden Elementary for a minute. With being under construction this year, we've kind of been in a holding pattern. It's a good place to be with all the new cafeteria and the new auditorium. But now that we're gearing up for sixth grade to leave, that creates us some new space. And one of those spaces will be a makerspace. So, we are aligning our budget to support that. Also, we will be fully implementing one-to-one Chromebooks next year. So, we've kind of been piloting that in each grade level, three, four, and five. So, we will be moving forward to support that training and materials and apps along with Google Classroom to support technology and personalized learning. And also, my building shared decision-making wants to put a focus on social emotional wellness for our building. So, we're gonna be looking at assemblies and different programs like peer mentors and things like that to promote that. And overall, the budget is neutral.
Good.
And to GLP, one of the things I'm hoping that you notice, Kelly and I have worked really hard to have a really consistent approach at the GLP and Eden Elementary. So, I think often there was a discrepancy in the buildings in the sense that they might have had some programs at GLP and then Eden Elementary that were very different. We tried to really streamline so you could see some similarities. So, when you look at our budget focus, we are also creating a makerspace for next year. Our shared decision-making team has been brainstorming what they want it to look like, what the focus will be. Right now, they're looking at things like a media center with a green space, where they have a green screen, where they can do more media production with their iPads. You'll see a problem-solving type space in that room where they have, if you see some of those escape rooms that are out there right now, there's actually cubes that teachers can use that are escape cubes, where the students have to problem-solve to get out of the cube. Our teacher center that is housed at GLP, which is the Erie Cat Teacher Center, has one right now that teachers are trying to see if they like that model and it's something they want us to look into. We're looking at more of arts and crafts creative space within that room and something that has some electronics and robotics. And we've been very fortunate to have Mr. Suffin come in and work with some of our teachers and they're trying to tap into his resources a little. So, without having too much implication on our budget, we're trying to look at how is that makerspace going to look? We are focusing on how will we have an impact with the new standards? And although they're not dramatically different, they may have a slight impact on our curriculum materials and resources. And along with the makerspace, how can we have more of a STEAM approach? So, some of the things that GLP's already kind of piloting is moving from an author's tee to a STEAM night, more of an inquiry approach with some of our activities. Our budget, for the most part, is budget neutral in the sense that we're continuing to run all the programs we have traditionally. So, our budget line held the same. The only increase you will see is we are currently running five first grades, so we're hoping to add a second grade so that we go to five second grades. Now, other than a teacher impact, which isn't really at my level, we had a $125 increase for the supplies within that classroom. So, that's the only increase you see at the GLP. And then we're continuing with things like, one of the goals we've had this year that we're moving on to next year is our continued focus on personalized learning and the resources we need to support that, flexible seating. We have more teachers jumping onto that and we've kind of been chipping away at that little by little. But all of those things, we've been able to manage within the lines we have. So, we're focusing on GLP.
So, if you look at the one-page handout, where I told you we're gonna go big picture this year instead of line by line, it's the one that looks like this with the yellow lines across it. You'll see, we're just looking at just what has happened in the supplies and materials and contractual lines. They've held their lines all total for the direct education to .14%, which I think they've done a great job because it's really tough. Because we all know that everything they bought this year is gonna go up and it's really hard to stay in those amounts. So, I really appreciate their working with us on that this year. So, thank you.
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you. So, you're gonna wanna stay with that sheet as I talk a little bit to you about the revenues. I'm going to leave the property tax alone, which is, the revenues are the bottom section of the sheet, the right here. We're not gonna talk about the property tax now until after we do the presentation for the property tax cap. And when I do that, I'll have a presentation so those in the audience can see the crazy formula we have to deal with. So, right now, we're looking at, our sales tax is probably gonna go down about $50,000 for the budget from last year to this year, just based on things that I'm hearing, seeing what we're getting this year in sales tax revenue. So, we wanna right-size that. So, where that shows up for you is in your miscellaneous revenues. Your miscellaneous revenues are your local revenues for things like your admissions, your sales taxes in there. So, that line has gone down specifically because we're looking at less sales taxes, the projection for this year. Even though costs may be going up, I'm still not comfortable with the amount we have budgeted for that dollar amount. So, then the huge thing is our state aid, which we're looking at it to go up 5.35% based on the projections for the governor's runs. The problem is, the governor uses data that came out in August, some that came out in November, and as he's gathering his data, there are things that are being changed all the time. So, his numbers are not always current and accurate because he's a couple months behind what's going on. So, when I reviewed the governor's runs, I looked at some calculations that we do, base things on our typical trends. And so, the real impact that I'm expecting is about 600,000 or a 5.35% increase at this point. The hope is, with the situation for us with contracts and staffing and the needs that a district has, we don't get 50% of our funding from the state anymore. And when the state put in this tax cap, they need to step up to the plate and say that they're gonna help fund districts more. Because the formula used to be, you would build your budget, you would look at what you were getting for state aid, and then you would tax close your budget. Well, with the property tax cap, they've hindered that philosophy. All of our state aid is based on weighted wealth ratios, property wealth ratios, with the implication that what you needed, your local taxpayer supported. And so, because of that, this tax cap has really kind of messed with how you would do the revenue section. So, what we're looking for is to be conservative in what we're planning to get from the state. We're hoping, typically, the legislative comes out at the end of March and they typically restore more educational funding. That's what we're hoping for so that we can move forward. Because most of our additional state aid came from what they call expense-driven aids. And an expense-driven aids means that in 1718, we spent extra dollars, so they'll give us more aid in 1819. So, does that mean we have new money? No, that means we just have money to cover what we spent this year. So, we're hoping for more foundation aid money, which we only got $133,000 of foundation aid money. And when you couple that with what the property tax cap would allow us to go for with a 50% plus one majority, you're gonna see that's not a lot of money to base at the increases that are required to run a school district. So, then the next thing I'd like to do is to show you the tax cap calculation. And I apologize now because everybody is gonna go, "Uh, she had me till the numbers."
Is it up on the screen behind us?
Not yet. I need your plug.
Okay.
It's a good time to take a snooze if you're tired because people love numbers. So, what I wanna do is, I wanna start with talking about some of the terminology. I know everyone has probably heard this in the past, but with me being new to the district, I wanna make sure that we have a clear focus and understanding of what the costs are for our district. Capital exclusions, which we will see later in the formula, they drive a huge part of what our issue is this year with the low tax cap calculation. Then, we're gonna run through the line-by-line calculation. Hold on to your seats, it's exciting. And then, we will talk about the tax levy threshold. And when we talk about the tax cap, it's not really that's the most that can be taxed, but that's the most you can tax with a 50% plus one majority. Anything beyond that requires a 60% voter authorization majority. The reason for this presentation at this time is, on March 1st is the deadline for giving our preliminary thoughts of what we're gonna be doing for our tax cap. So, think about this. March 1st, we have to tell them what we think we're gonna do in May. So, they haven't really told us what they're gonna give us for money yet, so there's a lot of moving parts to this budget every year. And so, it requires some assistance from me, some guidance from the Board of Education. So, the first number they give us is a tax-based growth factor. That comes from the office's real property and it's based on new building, not increased assessments, but actually new builds in our district. So, our factor for this year is .008. So, it's not even 1%, .008 of a percent. Then, we have an allowable levy growth factor, which gets applied in the formula, and that's provided by the New York State Comptroller's Office. The number that is used and it's based on is the average consumer price index percentage for the year, for the preceding 12 months. That's at 2.13. So, if you wanna think about it in a general term, that's kind of like where they say inflation is. But the tax cap, the maximum amount you can use for this calculation is 2%. So, if we had a consumer price index of 20%, we could still only use 2%. So, you can start to see where this runs into problems with just keeping status quo in a district. So, part of the formula talks about pilots or payments in lieu of taxes. What happens is, the IDA of Erie County would go to a company that was starting up and offer a property tax incentive for up to 10 years where they would gradually, as their business grew, they would gradually come fully on the tax rolls. That is not, there are no pilot agreements in the Eden Central School District, and that's a good thing for us. And then, there's available carryover, which would be money that was left over from the 1718 calculation that wasn't fully utilized when the district taxed. But we don't have any of that in the calculation either. So, the calculation gets simpler and simpler. So, when we talk about the capital exclusion, because of the capital project in 1718, there was $329,000 we could add to raise revenue for because the voters had authorized us to do a capital project. That was why last year's was, I believe, a 4%, a little over 4% increase in your property tax levy, not in your individual tax bill, but in the amount that the school district as a whole is raising from everyone. And so, that was because of this capital exclusion. For 1819, that number is zero. And you'll see where that plays in when we start to look at the calculation. So, again, we have our .008 growth factor, that's our new builds. We have our 2%, which is our maximum allowed inflation. And we start with the prior year tax levy of 14.2 million. We multiply that times a .008 and that gives us to 14.3 million. And then, we subtract out last year's capital exclusion. This is huge. So, now, we're down to 14 million because we lost 329,000. And what do we get for this year? We get nothing to add back to it. So, now, we take that 14 million and we multiply that times a 2%. And that gives us roughly 14.3 million that we could raise taxes with a simple majority of voters of 50% plus one. So, when you look at this, what does that mean in dollars? That means we can raise .46 of a percent or $66,000 in new money to fund any increased costs. Now, we're gonna add that 63,000 to the 133 and you have less than $200,000 that you're gonna have in true new money that you didn't have to spend money to get. That's the key. Now, Now, when people hear the tax cap and the 2%, they're like, "Well, you can't go over the 2%." But we see it in our towns, in our counties, in our villages, and what happens is, with a majority vote of 60% of the authorized powers that be, in our case, it's the voters, you can raise a higher levy if you need to, because that's what you need to close your budget gap. So, at this point, I have a tax cap calculation that is due to the New York State Comptroller on March 1st. What he's asking me at this point is, simply, can you, are you planning on, at this point in time, not knowing what the legislature might give you for additional state aid, will that $66,000 close your gap? It will not for the Eden School District. We're still at a $705,000 gap. So, the decision that I need an answer for is, when I submit my initial tax cap calculation to New York State for March 1st, my question to the Board of Education is, are you planning to go out for a simple majority, or would you like the option available? Now, we can change either way. So, we can turn around and say, right up until April 24th, when I submit the budget. So, actually, I'm asking, I forget the date of the April board meeting, but I'm asking this Board of Education to approve the budget. Once you approve the budget, we will have closed the gap, and I will be pointing out to you where we are for that calculation. So, now, I'm going to turn it over to the Board of Education members to ask questions and kind of work through your thought processes with me of how you would like me to make my initial submission, knowing that you're not locked in stone to it.
So, just before they start, I see a board meeting on April 17th, which is a Tuesday, that makes sense. That's the one that Barb puts her dibs on every year, and she won again. So, which means that whatever you decide to input it for the comptroller, you can change up until April 17th?
Yes.
Okay. So, Laura's looking for some conversation from you as a board of what you want to do. Your maximum allowance is .46, right?
Uh huh, with a simple majority. 2% is the maximum of the cap. 2.13 is the projected
CPI.
CPI index or inflation.
So, in these numbers right now, we just rolled everything forward from the previous year. So, we've got $941,000 of reserves already borrowed in this budget number, along with $518 from the transportation
No, fund balance, that's appropriated fund balance.
Okay.
And then...
And then, we're still short 705.
Correct.
So, it's like 2.2.
Yes.
So, what do you...
That's where the number's at, boys and girls.
So, what's, tell, say again, Don, what you think the 2.2 is?
So, right now, we're 2.2 short of revenues versus expenses.
If we utilize the same amount of reserves and appropriate fund balance as we did last year, yes. That's how the gap gets down to 705.
And you're looking for a number to send to the comptroller?
I'm just looking, not a number, I'm looking to say, are we entertaining the thought of going out at higher than a .46%?
So, you don't have to give an exact
I don't have to give an exact number.
I think we should go out at 2.
I agree with Paul Eivling, we should go out at 2% and maintain that, that 2% growth. I mean, we're still short, but...
We'll still have to look at the budget tight and tighten some things up, but 2%, you know, I think that's a safe number.
And the consequence of a failed budget, I know that doesn't mean, so if the vote doesn't pass...
If, what would happen is, if on the May vote, we, let's say we were to get 59.5% voter authorization, this Board of Education would have some choices. You can go back out for another vote the third Tuesday in June, and you can change your budget or keep it the same. And if you go back out again and you are unsuccessful, then we get 0% increase in a contingency budget. There is no use of school facilities without full payment from anyone outside of the school district. There is a cap on the percentage of the budget that can be used for administration. That cap stays the same from here. In other words, in a three-part budget, you have your administrative, your capital, and your instructional portions of the budget. And for argument's sake, because I'm not positive what the exact numbers are, let's say 10% is our administrative costs in the 1718 budget. You could not exceed 10% in administrative costs for 1819. And you would have a 0% increase for the...
But we don't have to go out the second time at the same. We could go out at the lower
Correct.
For the simple majority.
Correct.
So, the difference between the 2% and the .46 is 219,000 additional tax dollars. So, it goes from 66,000 to 285,000, round numbers.
So, all's I'm looking for is just a consensus from the board, a direction. It's nothing etched in stone, and as we finish finalizing our budget and we go through the next month where we have a budget workshop where you'll have three scenarios to pick, that's where the majority of your decision will be then. But right now, we're waiting to see what's going to happen in the legislature sessions, to see where we can go, to see whether or not we want to change any decisions made this evening. What the comptroller is looking for is, they will statistically look at the calculations that are placed there for March 1st, and they'll say, "Well, we have 80% of the school districts are going to stay within the tax cap, but 20% are looking at this point to exceed it." And that number will change throughout the state as we get closer to the vote day, as budgets are finalized.
I feel more comfortable with the 2%.
Jack? I think at this point, it makes sense to at least have an option to do that. Let's not close that door, and hopefully, we don't have to, but if we do have to, we have the option.
What it does too, to do it now, is it gives us an opportunity to get the word out to people about why we're doing it, what we're looking to accomplish with it, talk to the kids, see what it is that they're hoping for for next year, and see if we can add some of what they're hoping for in their instruction into next year. So, it gives an opportunity for people to be aware.
And as we get closer to finalizing a budget, I will have numbers where you can see what the impact would be on an average household in the Eden School District, so that it is no longer a huge number. Now, it's a personal number that people could kind of look at.
We just, we just spent $22 million, you know, we've got to be able to utilize the $22 million we just spent.
Cheryl, what do you think?
I agree.
All right, so, we're going to go out for over this year.
Okay, thank you. And again,
Any other questions?
That can be changed as we work through the budget season if we, if the state comes up with revenues and we're able to close the gap closer.
Any other questions? Okay, with that moving on.
All right, so, request to withdraw specific items from consensus items. All right, and now, routine actions. Approval of consensus items recommended motion, that the following consensus items be approved as listed in the administrative memorandum A through R.
Second. Any discussion?
I'd just like to make note, if I can get to here on here, that R is the first reading of a field trip policy. Basically, it's making a distinction between a day trip and an extended field trip. We've already started creating the forms, and I would say that two of our teachers who are enthusiastic with their students have already started to utilize the guidelines that would become policy if the board chose to go in that direction.
Any further comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carried.
All right, so, approximate position and time, the board is designated to receive statements from individuals and groups. The board will review all statements, then respond appropriately at a future meeting. All persons in attendance are required to sign the attendance sheet and designate their representative status. For example, a parent, a teacher, a bus driver, chamber of commerce, etc. There is a two-minute time limit.
Hi. I request you two minutes and 20 seconds. If I can't have it, somebody else will come up and read, so, is that okay? Okay. My name is Nancy Elvers, and I am here on behalf of the issue of Ms. McKenna and her sudden departure. Even if none of the rumors about what actually happened are true, the way it was handled was very disappointing, to say the least. In the hallways in the gym, banners hang stating what an Eden Raider should be. I think the board should follow that as well and lead by example. R is for respect. Very little respect was shown for a woman who loved her job, did not want to leave, and kept our building safe. A for appreciation. Very little appreciation was shown for a 20-year employee without a blemish on her record. I for integrity. If this was handled with integrity, maybe so many parents, students, teachers, administrators, and staff wouldn't be so upset. D for determination, and that I will give you. It has taken several years, but you finally got rid of her. E for empathy. No empathy was shown, given the timing of her pink slip a couple days before Christmas. R for responsibility. It is irresponsible to get rid of the only disciplinary in this building, especially during the critical year of moving the sixth graders up. And S is for self-control, which I am giving to myself, for not screaming at last month's board meeting when you all agreed that it was important to keep an employee because she had an existing relationship with some of the students. Ms. McKenna knows all of the students. This makes the board look untrustworthy, makes you look like you have an agenda that has very little to do with education and the welfare of all of our students. Now that she is gone, what is your plan? If her position is so unnecessary, why is Mr. Schaefer here? If you are hiring a new principal because of the sixth graders, why is he starting six months before them? On a daily basis, Ms. McKenna would tackle bullying, cheating, truancy, physical fights, vandalism, vaping, pornography, drinking, drugs, bringing weapons to school, threatening each other's lives. She dealt with this day in and day out, every day, all day, week after week. With 800 students in this building, herd was a necessary first full-time job. The safety of our children is too important to be divided up by two principals who already have full-time duties. I would like to know what your plan is, and in an effort to save time, feel free to respond tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, Karen.
Hello. My name is Karen Hall, parent of two kids in the district. I just wanted to highlight a couple of fun things and things going on with the music department, and certainly acknowledge the musical and the students and all the work you guys are doing, my goodness. Not just the kids that are on the stage, but the pit and the pit crew and the stage crew and everyone. I mean, they started this process, you are on the committee, you've been doing this for a year now, but they started this process months and months ago, and they're working so hard every day on weekends. So, we're looking forward to it, so invite everybody to join us at the musical, March 8th, 9th, 10th, 4/11th, so...
Can you talk about the times?
Uh, mainly. March 8th, it's Thursday through Sunday, March 8th, 9th, 10th, and 11th, 8th, 9th, 10th. It's at 7:00 PM, the 11th, it's at 2:00 PM, and tickets go on sale for the public on Monday. They'll be available on the website.
On the Eden School website? And what is the cost of the tickets?
It's $7 for students and for seniors, 60 and older, and then, the regular ticket is $10.
And is that through PayPal?
It's through the Venfrite, and yeah, I think it is.
Okay, okay, okay. And the name of the musical?
Catch Me If You Can. So, really wanted to acknowledge them. The other thing I wanted to mention is a lot of things that are going on with, if you're familiar with the ECMEAs, which is Erie County Music Educators Association. And if you don't have a student that does a lot of music, you might not know about this, but this is where students from band and orchestra and vocalist go and perform a solo for a judge. And there are huge, huge benefits, and it is, it is a nerve-wracking, high-pressure situation. Here's an article about some of the benefits, Dave, who's all getting that printed for us, but just some benefits of having those students participate in those events. And we really have a lot of students that go and participate and perform and do these solos, and they spend months and months getting ready, and thanks to the teachers for helping them prepare these solos. But we've had a lot, a very high percentage then make it on to a next level, which is for the ECMEAs, Erie County, they go to an all-area, it's all-county, it's all-county for the ECMEAs, and then they perform with other students from other districts. So, we have a lot of kids that move on to a different level, and then, there's also the New York State Music Educators, and they can perform a solo, and that comes in April and May, and then, they can also go on to a next level. And we've had students that have, within the last few years, have made it even on to a national level. Tell me up here.
New York Conference.
The New York Conference.
Yeah, it's that big state.
So, I just wanted to say, a lot of students, I do have numbers, about 4,500 students actually perform a solo in the county, and that's part of that article, from grades four to 12, and about 2,100 are selected to go on. And like I said, a high percentage of our students, I don't know, probably had numbers for the vocalist, because most of our vocalist end up going on to a higher level.
All but two.
Wow, all but two, wow.
Which is wonderful. So, and there's junior high, there's an elementary level, there's a junior high, and then, there's also senior high level. So, we had for orchestra, ECMEAs, about six junior high and three senior high. The Eden, the elementary level, eight students, and then, for charisma, three junior high and a couple of senior high. But again, these students are really working hard and moving forward on to the next level.
I think it would be great to get, for the music teachers, to get a picture of them before they go, because just to get to this level is pretty exciting, and as opposed to waiting to see what happens afterwards, and we can get it in the paper. And then, can you just talk about Amy Steiner for a minute?
He's what?
Amy Steiner, so she was the Grammy, who can help me?
Music educator.
Denise? Annette? Can you just, for quick, tell me a quick second, Amy Steiner?
So, Amy Steiner is a graduate of the East City School District.
There you go.
She teaches in the city of Buffalo, and she was aware of this Grammy nomination, and she did some research in her district and realized that students that played a musical instrument graduated from high school. So, a project of hers was to get more kids involved with playing musical instruments. She submitted that, I think, to the Grammys, and along with other teachers from around our country, submitted their ideas, and she was nominated as one of 25 to receive recognition, $10,000 for their school district, and I think it was also $10,000 for her to use with her project. She, that's Amy, she was nominated, someone else was selected for this year's Grammy.
That's awesome, though. That's awesome. Thank you for explaining that.
Just to tie in to Karen's, for the Erie County Music Educators Association, for the chorus and vocals for the junior and senior high school, we had three junior high students audition this year. That was low because it corresponded with the musical, so some kids weren't able to do it. Normally, we send seven kids, and this year, we had 100% that were accepted. And I guess the last seven years, we've had 100% acceptance rate into that as well. And we have more students going than Frontier and the Williamsville East combined, so that's very good for us. They are going to be performing on March 9th and 10th at Frontier. Also, for the junior high...
So, it's the same weekend as the musical?
It is, yeah, so...
That's why they couldn't go.
Yeah, there are a lot of the junior high kids that are involved.
Usually, they send a little bit more than that, and they were all accepted, or I'm sorry, 90% this year was accepted, but they've always had 100% the last four years. And just to show you the grandeur of this, like there's 27 districts that participate, and only 160 students are accepted, and there's like 4,000 to 5,000 kids that you should try out for all the areas. So we really appreciate his parents' support for music and arts. It seems like it's not as grander, some of the sports, but these, on a level, if you compare the percents, these kids are very high-quality students, so we appreciate that.
So maybe, maybe our older kids would love to perform in our new elementary auditorium at some point. That would be quite the thing.
I passed around the theory that this is just junior high school that they're performing. If you saw the quality of the, this is some pretty amazing songs, so maybe we could have the three junior high come back and sing one of the songs for you when they come back from learning them.
Yes.
And also, you know, we really should thank the teachers and the staff because they put a lot of time into it, not only like their own instructional time, but personal time. So we do appreciate that. My name is Colleen Gaglio, and I just wanted to, that wasn't what I was supposed to talk, but I was just going on with Karen. I just wanted to tell you, I appreciated the call from the guidance counselors for the click to link on to the electives for the high school with the issues of having so many study halls, so that was, I was, it was a very welcome call to get that. It was easy, I could click on and see. I mean, I'm not very pleased with the amount of electives that are there, but at least I know that there are other options available, so we do appreciate that. And I just, as a parent, I was very upset about Ms. McKenna as well. I did feel that there wasn't a lot of respect for that, and the morale, I think it affects the morale of all the staff when we want to know them, we appreciate them, so.
Thank you, Colleen.
Good evening.
Hi, Annette.
Instrumental music teacher. I'm approaching the board this evening just to say that, should the financial situation improve, the music department would like the board to consider restoring the 1.0 FTE instrumental music position at the junior/senior high school that was lost when Paul Frohler retired five years ago.
That's banned, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Instrumental. I would also, well, the music department would also like to ask that the district restores 6th grade general music, so that it is in the schedule of all 6th grade students, regardless if they are in an ensemble or not. And those are the two things that I'd like to address with the board this evening. Any questions? Karen, next.
I don't think we have any questions.
No, I'd just like to clarify, so what is in the current schedule for 6th grade right now is, just to clarify what Annette is stating, is students that are in 6th grade at the elementary school, all students, regardless of whether they play an instrument or not, are in general music. With the move to 6th grade at the middle school, in order to push in other specials or other electives, depending on the word you want to use, a decision was made by us that students who are in an ensemble would not have to take or be enrolled in general music. So that, that's just a clarification of what you're stating. So not all students in 6th grade general music, but those students not taking an instrument or an ensemble like vocal would be scheduled.
Can I just ask if we are meeting state regulations by having?
As long as they're in a middle school.
If they, if they are taking an instrument, they don't have to take general music?
They do not.
And that's still fulfilling state requirements?
Yes.
According to the regulation that I read, it does not say that. But I guess it's up to interpretation by administration.
We have checked.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Tina Powell, I'm a parent. I'm here because about a month ago, my fifth-grade daughter came home and said, Mom, there's no field trip this year, the school doesn't have one. Okay. I sent an email to Mrs. Anzolong, who gave me a very prompt reply that I was very happy for, verified that, guess what my daughter told me was accurate, that guess they had been canceled. I'm not asking that the district fund them, I understand that the PTA had funded them and they needed to pull back on that. I'm wondering why, as a parent, I found out a month ago from my daughter, why we weren't told whenever this decision was made, which I'm guessing was long enough ago, because then when I went back to look at the district calendar that came out, I don't think field trip dates are on there, and typically, they are, because I look at them so I know what to take off of work to be able to help with the field trip. So I'm frustrated because I don't feel I should be in a school district. Okay, I don't think we purposely built our home in a school district where my daughter should come to me and say that the field trip of her last year in the elementary school, that there's nothing. And that doesn't get communicated to me or other parents in time for us to maybe do something. Had we known, had we known that the issue was funding, the PTA didn't have enough money, the school district doesn't have enough money, we should be in on that conversation, we should know that. There are things we could do. I understand that there's something with New York State that you can't ask parents to send in money for field trips. Okay, but that doesn't, I don't think that means you can't ask parents to do fundraising or, so that's my frustration. This is her last year at the elementary school, her brother got to go to Darien Lake, she was looking forward to this. And as her mom, this is why I'm here, because that isn't right for her.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I say something to that?
Yeah, you're free to say.
Okay, I just, can I say something to that, Mrs. Powell?
Sure.
It's gonna upset me. As being on the PTA for a long time, parents, you're allowed to say whatever you want, but as the PTA, that's where we want parents to come, to listen to this and to explain things like that, because I could have told you a long time ago that there were no field trips and why. And that's our place, so if you could, sorry.
To PTA?
If you could invite people to PTA, that's where we want parents to come, and then we can share it with the board and with the teachers and with everything.
I can't go to everything.
Oh, I understand.
Everything.
Oh, I understand, but that's a, that's just a base for us to communicate better with the parents, so just if you could pass that along, that that is a platform where parents could learn more.
Honestly, I didn't know the PTA funded the field trips.
Okay.
I do not know that until Ms. Anzolong had sent that big part of the email. I didn't know that. I had no idea it was part of our budget.
Okay.
But as PTA president, we've never funded all of those.
Right, but it's a platform to talk.
The school district paid for those, so anyone who felt, um, you know, PTA still gives a lot of money to the schools, and it was, we never 100% paid for them.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So a recommendation that I would make is, we have two board meetings in March, both of them start at 6:15, as my school messenger global message came out, is please come and share with us what you're hoping to see in the budget for next year. This is what we need to hear. We had a community forum, I can't even tell you what date it was, but we really did not receive a whole lot of suggestions from parents of what they'd like to see either restored or added to the budget. We'd love to hear it, so thank you for bringing that in there. Kelly, I see you're raising your hand.
We do have a field trip for every grade level. We apply for the state DUC, the conservation grant, so every grade level is going on a field trip, but I'm in our state.
Kelly, has that the kids to parks?
Yeah, the park. They're used to here.
So while, so while the funding source changed from, right, so while the funding source changed from last year, you were able to apply for a grant and receive one?
That covers transportation.
Okay. That would cover the transportation for the field trips for every grade at the elementary school? Does that include GLP? Just elementary school? Okay.
In my opinion, I'm sorry, I just needed to know, like, when will we, because usually they need parent helpers, I have to put in ahead of time to get kind of.
As soon as the grade levels figure out.
Thank you for clarifying that.
This is a grant that's new to our district this year, so I think they're just still working out the timelines and everything and all the paperwork behind it. Sometimes it's very exhaustive for the staff.
Thank you.
Good evenings. My name is Colleen Jelinski, I'm a substitute teacher here in Eden. I just wanted to bring to your attention a petition that went around the lunch period, well, two lunch periods. 250 students signed the Keep Ms. McKenna petition. One of them even wrote in the back, why are you fired, Mrs. McKenna? But I'm looking at the names of these, and just two little girls took it around during two periods, and some of the names of the kids that signed this are kids that are in trouble all the time. They like her, they have respect for her, and they don't even want to see her go, and they spend a lot of time with her. So I'll let you guys just take a gander at it.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Klopp. I started teaching here in 1991. Great place to work, wonderful students, great community, and it was very sad to see the way the Dina students position was abolished in budget discussions. So for 20 years, Ms. McKenna had networked directly with our staff, our students, Eden police, guidance counselors, social workers, school psychologists, school pupil personnel services, Ryland psychiatric services, ECMC now health services, child protection services, Western New York Against Drugs and Alcohol United, Eden Athletic Tractor, Bozey's vocational staff, cafeteria staff, bus staff, maintenance staff, and the custodial staff. And I'm a pretty good public speaker, and my voice cracks when I start to tell some of the things I witnessed. One kid comes to me with a picture on their phone of one of our special ed students that another kid had passed, and I watched her within seven minutes stop the vocational bus, pull the kid off who first sent the picture, and then grab every other kid while I scooted around with other people and grabbed students' phones and told them, you cannot continue to pass that picture around. That's just one example of many typical days for her. She had developed such trust or rapport with her academic family that when a student informed her another student was about to take their own life. Ms. McKenna had developed such trust or rapport with our academic family that when a student informed her another student was about to take their own life, Ms. McKenna with her trusted rapport contacted the Eden police, who immediately went to the rescue. This happened more than once, this didn't just happen once. I have a couple memories in my head. Five years ago, both Lieutenant McCarthy and I went to the podium with the same message that this isn't just a job to her, she's a very valued individual when it comes to our students' safety. She took care of private issues, student attendance, child protection services, sexting, cheating, possession of drug or alcohol. Being under the influence of drug and alcohol, I spent many a dance night with her until midnight, when we would wait for parents to come and pick up their children. Truancy runaways, teacher-student fraternization, statutory rape cases. Students and guardians and parents in these situations appreciated that McKenna kept the issues private. She wasn't one to be in the spotlight, and the community trusted her. Yes, other personnel helped with these delicate issues, but most often, Ms. McKenna was the first to know, contacted the right personnel and followed through. Ms. McKenna was the first to know because of the trust she'd established. Very often, students themselves would report things directly to her. I brought all sensitive student issues to her. And in the future, Eden has a policy for parents and guardians to be educated about drug and alcohol before dances, so students can go to the proms. She supervised that and kept track of the parents who attended so that the students had permission to go to dances. And if a parent couldn't make the night that we had the presentation, she made special accommodations. Eden has an attendance policy that's posted in our calendar, she, somebody needs to track students' attendance issues. We had an academic eligibility program that both her and Ms. Wack, thanks to them, it is currently still very successful. We had detentions. I'm curious who's going to step in for read or respond day, which is right around the corner. We got made.
That was four minutes, Mrs. Scott.
Student driving, I only have a few more seconds. Student driving parking permissions, parking lot behavior, cafeteria behavior, conflict in the halls, on buses, in class, through social media. We need her.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Can I ask this?
Up there or at the table?
Or just like this right here?
Yes.
Kind of edge of it. Um, this is not like against any, like, I'm very excited to meet our new principal, nothing about any of that, but as you know, like, a lot of the rumors about what happened with Ms. McKenna are going around, I don't even know like the whole story, a lot of people don't know the whole story. A lot of the students are kind of feeling very odd about it, and I'm not saying that students should know all of the details and logistics that happens with administrator, with administrations and stuff like that, but I think some clear decision needs to be made, or to tell teachers or administrators or whoever about how to approach the kids of what happened, because there's so many different stories going around, you're going to get other people fired up about things that may not have even happened. So I think the students need to be kind of in a loop on what happened, because a lot of us are just confused and don't really know how to think or who to have feelings towards about the matter. So I think that'll just clear up.
It is frustrating, but unfortunately, because some of it is a personnel matter, we're not able to tell certain facts, and that's after consulting with attorneys, and some decisions were made not by the district on when she left.
That's fine, I just think that part needs to be cleared.
Well, again, we're not able to talk about personnel matters, that's the problem, is we feel, our hands feel tied too, because we don't want rumors out there that aren't true. We don't want people to feel that things were done, and unfortunately, we're not able to.
Why couldn't we go about it in a way of saying, we're sad to see her go, like something like respecting her, she's been here.
We are.
I feel like I can see it, and I feel about the same sad, so.
And just knowing that, though, that you said, like, okay, you can't talk about personnel matters, we weren't even told that, it was just kind of, one day she was there, one day she wasn't.
Okay.
That's it, it's all we're saying.
Okay.
Thank you for speaking up. Anybody else?
Anybody else? All right, seeing none, we'll move on.
Okay. New business, resignations. Accept resignation. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation for the purpose of retirement of clerk typist Patricia Steinmetz be accepted effective March 7, 2018. The Board of Education and Administration wish to thank Mrs. Steinmetz for her 23 and a half years of service to the district.
Second. Discussion or questions?
I suspect she's halfway to California.
And she's very well missed at the elementary building, very sad.
Quite the legacy.
Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Accept resignation. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation for the purpose of retirement of library media specialist Stephen Clancy be accepted effective July 1, 2018. The Board of Education and Administration wish to thank Mr. Clancy for his four years of.
matters. We weren't even told that. It was just kind of one day she was there, one day she wasn't.
Okay.
That's it. It's all we're saying.
Okay.
Thank you for speaking up. Anybody else?
Anybody else? All right, seeing none, we'll move on.
Okay. New business, resignations. Accept resignation. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation for the purpose of retirement of clerk typist Patricia Steinmetz be accepted effective March 7, 2018. The Board of Education and Administration wish to thank Mrs. Steinmetz for her twenty-three and a half years of service to the district.
Second. Discussion or questions?
I suspect she's halfway to California.
And she's very well missed at the elementary building. Very sad.
Quite the legacy.
Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Accept resignation. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation for the purpose of retirement of business teacher Joseph Messai be accepted effective July 1, 2018. The Board of Education and Administration wish to thank Mr. Messai for his twenty-six years of service to the district.
Second. Questions or comments?
Just, I smile every time I think of Lauren talking about Joe Messai, the giant of a man with the little tiny kids at GLP. But he's excited.
I'm happy for him.
He's excited.
It'll be a lot...
If no further questions or discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Accept resignation. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation for the purpose of retirement of library media specialist Stephen Clancy be accepted effective July 1, 2018. The Board of Education and Administration wish to thank Mr. Clancy for his four years of service to the district.
Second. Discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Appointments. All appointments will not be effective, and service to the district pursuant thereto shall not begin until there has been compliance with statutory and regulatory provisions for fingerprinting, certification, and clearance for employment. Recommended motions. appoint principal. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Mark Shibish, am I right?
Yes, you are.
Thank you very much. Who is professionally certified as a school district leader, initially certified as a school building leader, and permanently certified in mathematics 712, is hereby appointed to a probationary position in the principal tenure area for a probationary period commencing on April 4, 2018, and ending on April 3, 2022, unless extended in accordance with the law. This expiration date is tentative and conditional only. Except to the extent required by the applicable provisions of Section 3012 of Education Law, in order to be granted tenure, the administrator must receive composite or overall annual professional performance review ratings pursuant to Section 3012D of the Education Law of either effective or highly effective in at least three of the four preceding years. And if the administrator receives an ineffective composite or overall rating in the final year of the probationary period, the administrator shall not be eligible for tenure at that time. Salary is prorated at $92,500 annually for 2017-2018 and 2018-2019. Health insurance, if taken, begins April 4, 2018.
Second. Discussion or questions?
Just that Mr. Shibish is here. He comes to us from the Pioneer School District, where he's been there for a number of years. The administrative council had asked in the fall if the successful candidate for this position could start in early April, so that Mr. Servoni could focus on the transition for the sixth grade coming up and the middle school. And so I appreciate the support of the board from the fall in having this position start in April.
Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
They've already figured out who you are, Mr. Shibish, so if you just stand up and...
Congratulations.
Is there anything that you want to say? Is it a shorter drive? It's a beautiful drive to Eden. Yes, thank you. Welcome.
Permanent appointment. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Mary Granger be permanently appointed as a part-time clerk typist, 3.8 hours per day, effective March 4, 2018.
Second. Discussion or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Permanent appointment. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Toni Marie Ann Sweeney be permanently appointed as a part-time cafeteria monitor, 2.5 hours per day, effective March 4, 2018.
Second. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Permanent appointment. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Stefania Cooper be permanently appointed as a registered professional school nurse, effective March 4, 2018.
Second. Questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Permanent appointment. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Deanne Glenn Dunning be permanently appointed as a licensed practical nurse, effective March 4, 2018.
Second. Questions or discussion?
I'd just like to add that this was a new position, supported by the Board of Education, brought to us through Shawn Johnson last year, and I have heard wonderful things about two things, the position and also Deanne. It's made all the difference with our school nurses being on the bus, being able to man our nurse's office, and she's just been an absolute pleasure in a brand-new position that the district had never been able to support before.
Because we had school secretaries covering for nurses. This is great.
Yep.
Permanent appointment. Recommended...
You have to take a vote on that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Abstained. Opposed, motion carried. Thank you.
Okay. Permanent appointment. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Noel Schmidt be permanently appointed as a school bus driver, effective March 4, 2018.
Second. Questions or discussions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Permanent appointment. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Judith Palaschi be permanently appointed as a school bus driver, effective March 4, 2018.
Second. Questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
appoint extended leave substitute teacher. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Amy Holland, who is initially certified in Students with Disabilities 1 through 6 and Childhood Education, grades 1 through 6, be approved as an extended leave substitute elementary teacher, replacing Heather Ratter, effective approximately April 17, 2018, through approximately June 6, 2018. Salary is $95 per day.
Second. Questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
appoint extended leave substitute teacher. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Andrea Demont, who is initially certified in Students with Disabilities, grades 1 through 6, in Childhood Education, grades 1 through 6, be approved as an extended leave substitute elementary teacher, replacing Madison Weber, effective approximately March 1, 2018, through approximately June 6, 2018. Salary is $95 per day.
Second. Discussion or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
appoint bus driver. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Charles Felzer be appointed as a bus driver, effective January 29, 2018. Salary is based upon CSEA contract level 9, step 1.
Second. Discussion or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
approve substitute assistant principal. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Richard Schaper, who is certified as a school district administrator, be appointed as a substitute assistant principal, effective February 2, 2018, through approximately March 30, 2018. Salary is $350 per day.
Second. Questions or discussions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Do I read these and this? Okay, appointments.
Are you on the addendum?
On the addendum. Annual appointments. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following changes in 2017-2018, annual appointments be made. Attendance Officer Jeff Servoni, principal. Title IX Coordinator Lauren Carter, principal. Educational Officer Shawn Johnson, Director of Pupil Personnel. Junior-Senior High DASSA Building Coordinators Jeff Servoni, principal, and Mark Shibish, effective April 4, 2018.
Second. Discussions or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
approve 2018-2019 school calendar. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the 2018-2019 school calendar be approved.
Second. Questions or discussion?
Oh, yes. So in respect for our parents who have already started to email me about next year's calendar, and also to keep a trend that we have done in years past, we attempt to approve next year's calendar in February each year. This particular year, though, State Education Department has guidance that's in a forty-five minute, or a forty-five-day comment period and won't be voted on until mid-March. So we're not going to wait until end of March to let our parents know what the school calendar is for next year. The question is whether the Board of Regents will adopt new guidelines for attendance for schools. Basically, we've always had to have a minimum of 180 days. Our kids hear that all the time. I say, "I only have four snow days to play with," right? If we go below 180, then you have to come back during break. And unfortunately, it's usually spring break, which everybody's gone away, so that really complicates it some. But the additional guidance in this, which really is good, it's good guidance, puts hours on it as well. So at the elementary level, it's a minimum of 900 hours of instruction, and at the secondary level, it's 990 hours of instruction. It all works out just fine if the Board of Regents doesn't state that we have to subtract our passing time. If the Board of Regents says that I can't use the three minutes in between every single period, you're taking 27 minutes a day times 180 days, which comes out to a day and a half. So, yes, I agree with you, Hilly. That's really just enough, right? So the other piece is that the Board of Regents could also subtract recess time at the elementary school. Now, we don't necessarily have recess time scheduled into anything in particular, so I think we're a little bit better than that. Right now, we are fine with this calendar. It gives us five snow days for next year. If, in fact, the Board of Regents does not approve in that guidance that, let's say, let me repeat that. If the Board of Regents does not ignore travel time, then we will lose a day and a half that's scheduled off at the high school, so the board would see a recommended change in the school calendar for next year. So right now, you have an off day as students and faculty the day before Thanksgiving, which I've been asked for years to get. I can get it into next year's calendar, as long as the Board of Regents doesn't look at travel time. And the other half of the day, I'm not quite sure where we would grab it from yet. But I'm going with this one, and I just need you to cross your fingers. Okay?
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
accept donation of tool chest. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, a Husky 52-inch, 15-drawer tool chest and cabinet set, valued at $645, be accepted from Canfield Landscaping and Garden Center for use in the Technology Education Department.
Second. Questions or discussion?
You saw this tool chest at the last board meeting by Matt Saramac.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
You're not going to make Ellen read all these tools, are you?
No, absolutely not.
Oh, thank you. One through 10, thank you very much.
I'd like to hear you read them.
Cheryl, you read them.
Thanks, Cheryl.
accept donation of tools. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, various tools listed below, valued at $1,561, be accepted from the used tool truck for use in the Technology Education Department, see lists 1 through 10.
Second. Discussion or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Pretty amazing.
approve moving of drama club funds. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the remaining funds for the elementary drama club be moved to the private purpose trust fund for future use by the elementary drama program.
Second. Questions or discussion?
Yes, I'd like to point out, at the elementary level, we're not allowed to have extra class activity. So by putting it in the private purpose trust, that way that money stays set aside for use in future years. With the capital project, things didn't occur as they typically would in the elementary school. This leaves those funds there to be used for the next time we do this.
And because they weren't touched this year, that's why you had to do this?
Correct. And because we no longer, the kids are moving up to, the sixth graders are moving up, so...
It was a sixth-grade musical.
It was a sixth-grade, well, fifth and sixth grade, but...
Right. So we didn't want to lose the funds and have them absorbed by the general fund. So this was a way to keep the mere mark for future use.
Other questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
approve FBLA overnight field trip. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, an FBLA overnight field trip to attend the state leadership conference in Binghamton, New York, April 11 through 13, 2018, be approved.
Second. Questions or discussions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
approve confirmation of enrollment officer. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education ratifies and confirms the practice of the director of enrollment, serving as the board's designated agent, for purposes of policy number 7130, and designates Lucinda Karstad as its agent for the purposes of investigating residency issues and for making determinations regarding enrollment and disenrollment of students.
Second. Questions or discussion?
This is not a change. We've been doing this as well prior to 2008. It was just recommended that we have the board approve it.
Seeing none, others, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
approve appointment of enrollment review officer. Recommended motion, the Board of Education hereby ratifies and confirms the practice of having the superintendent of schools provide an internal review of residency determinations made by anyone other than the board's designee appoints the superintendent of schools, Sandra Anzalone, as that review officer, with further authority to offer an informal review upon the request of either the director of enrollment or of parents, legal guardians of students adversely impacted by decisions of the director of enrollment.
Second. Questions or discussion?
I can see that shorter than Ellen. Basically, when a parent doesn't like a decision that Lucinda has made, they can appeal it to me.
That is very short. Seeing no other, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
So now we have information and proposals. Business report?
At this time, I think I've budgeted you to death, so we'll just leave it alone for tonight.
You get clapped on that one. Yeah. I agree.
I'll give you that $10 later.
Thank you.
I'm just going to pay you off. So under agricultural grants, I just wanted to give you good news. So I mentioned it at the last board meeting, but it's certainly worth mentioning it again if I can find the sheet of paper. But we are working, and we're awarded a grant by the Erie County Co-op, which is a farm-to-school grant. And basically, what this is, is it's an opportunity for us to use local foods in our school. And so we're looking at creative ways of doing this. Laura and I had some conversation today, and we'll certainly continue this with our council. It might not be in the cafeteria. It may be in the cafeteria. We're not really sure, but we're super, super excited about this. And with working with Diane Held, who also is an Eden grad, they're all over the place. So it's really called the Erie County Farm-to-School Project. And then the second one that I'm super excited about it is American Farmers Grow Rural Education Grant. These grants can be anywhere from $10,000 to $25,000 in an award under STEM education. Dan Henry, a farmer in town, has offered to sponsor the school for this grant, so we're starting to work on it this week.
Great.
Okay. And then I just have one other thing that I want to show you, but I might, I might need you, Lucinda. Let's see if it works out. So I don't know if you have all heard, I mean, these scores were embargoed until this past Wednesday, and I can't tell you that we've dug into them deeply, but I wanted to take an opportunity to show you where to find them. It's just simply data.nice.gov. And this is a public site, so I'm not on any site that only I can see. And I would just want to focus on what I thought was just incredible data for the junior-senior high school graduation rate. Certainly, there's so much more in here than this. You can pull up any school in New York State. You can pull up any district in New York State. You can pull it up by county, pull it up by Bosse's. You can see some higher educations around here. So let me just jot down here to see what you can see. I'm going to bypass the bar graph, because I think it's too difficult for you to see. But what I want you to focus on here is this side versus this one, 2006 versus 2007. And what you would be able to see is an improvement in our graduation rate from 92% to 95%. When you're in the 90s, this is a really big deal, because that means every single student is being, being looked at. This is data for all students. The Hamburg Sun did reach out to us today, the editor, because we are listed as the fourth highest graduation rate in Western New York schools. He asked how I felt about us being ranked up there with the elite schools like Clarence and Williamsville, and I said, "Everybody needs to move to Eden. It's just a wonderful town and a wonderful school." It's just a wonderful town and a wonderful school." So I also say and told the editor that, that this graduation rate, while it's only showing a snippet of information from one year, is if we were to take a look back over a course of a number of years, there's been a cultural shift. And it's, "Do your best, take some difficult courses, just, just have a good time, and don't worry so much about, about failing, but just have a good time and look forward to what you want to do in life, whether you want to go to work, go to college, go in the military, whatever that might be." And the other thing that you'll see here also is this Regents with an advanced diploma. Basically, this means that students are taking more than the state-required number of Regents diplomas. You can see that that one also increased from 51 to 53%. As we dig down into this one, you'll also see that our dropout rate went from 2% to 1%. 1% for us is one student. So in our entire graduation cohort, it was only one student who felt that they couldn't move on. When you take a look at it by gender, which is always important to look at, especially in small rural schools, and because nationally, there's a big conversation about how outperforming females are to males, so we want to look at that as well. You can see that the graduation rate for females went from 96 to 98%. And you can see that the Regents diploma with advanced went from 45 to 58%. That's a 13% increase in the number of students that are going above and beyond what New York State considers to be appropriate or, or pretty good in terms of a graduation rate. When we dig down into the next level, whoops, where did the boys go? Here's the boys. You can see in the boys that they went from 88% to 93% in graduation rate, also a 5% increase and a 34 to 37% in advanced diploma. So we're thrilled to see that it's happening on both, for both females and for male.
Can you just go back up?
Sure.
So it says 68 males in the 2017 class, and there's only 48 females? Go up a little bit higher. I think we have a difference, males and females.
There was that one grade that had a lot of guys, so that one, yeah.
Because it's not 50/50, or because it's so small?
No, it's, so it's 68, 48.
We did, we did have that one year when it was really boy happy.
What's 16? So 16 is 55, and just go down...
So what you're looking at from 55 to 48 is a smaller cohort.
Right, but, no, but so females to males... 68, way more boys in both classes.
Mm-hmm. It's not 50/50 here.
No.
Kind of blows away the whole biology thing, doesn't it? Then we move on, multiracial. We don't have enough for them to score us, so that's what you see a line for. The same thing would occur with American Indian or Alaskan Native. The same thing occurs if I continue on down. You know, I'm not quite sure why the data's not showing up for 2016, because we definitely had that subgroup. Moving on to black or African-American, not enough for it to show. Hispanic or Latino, the same. General education students, which you can see here, is with students that do not have an IEP, that 44 to 52% was the change. Again, a pretty decent 8% jump for students moving on for an advanced diploma. And, and this is the one that I really wanted to show you, is that we went from a 65% graduation rate for students with a disability to 93%, which is an intense focus on students in need and students at risk, not necessarily all students with a disability. And also, it's not just our, our senior-level teachers or our high school teachers. This is a K-12 effort, that you're going to start to see this trend across the board. And, and it doesn't happen in just one year. And so I'm incredibly proud of our parents, our community, our teachers, our support staff, and our administrators, and our kids, for really making this a focal point of their past couple of years. And I was really glad that Haley and Emma agreed with me on that. Yes, I'm going to let you speak, Haley. Wait a second. Because if I come down here, too, this is the other one, that our students that are economically disadvantaged, the graduation rate jumped from 79% to 94. And, and also, I believe it is an intense focus on instruction in the classroom, also the AEP program after school. It shows up in music, it shows up in the sports, it shows up in our electives. And, and I just think we have the best kids I've ever worked with, so. Anything you want to add? Are you surprised?
Yeah.
Is it awesome? So you can get to the site, it's just data.nisit.gov, and, and you can dig into Regents scores. You can do anything like that you want. Okay?
Cool.
Yeah, thank you for letting me show you that. I'm done.
Anything else? Anything from the board?
Roundtable?
I know Jen has been working on advocacy again. She has tentatively talked to the Assemblyman about...
Yep, Assemblyman Di Pietro.
About coming here and having a meeting with staff and parents to answer some questions on the budget.
So we're hoping he'll come to one of the board meetings in March.
Yeah. So we're going to try and get the word out and get as many people here as possible. A lot of people have questions, and this is a good opportunity to get them answered.
So before Ellen goes on to read Roman numeral number 7, I'd just like to put an